Scoffy chair. Hi Patrick. Yes, we're grossing us.
Must have been a good weekend that you wore detoxes for, so we had to take some of it to.
Must be a good weekend.
You guys doing today?
You wore detoxes fall, so they had to go to Rochester.
Ah.
If that's okay unless you you figured out the.
Hopefully it works out.
How they're gonna project is, but we're not. Oh, because it's all just the statute. Oh. Alright, cause I could see.
Okay, we go to ditch meetings today.
Yeah, you gotta come to Madison Lake. No, Lake Crystal.
Are you Crystal, I mean? I said Lake Crystal.
And lunch there.
Lunch at Lake's, yeah.
Everybody's all worried, do you know that she's not open on Tuesday?
I got it covered.
It's covered, it's covered.
We might all be eating at the gas station if we forget, that's right.
No, I saw.
I'm gonna.
Good morning, everyone, welcome to our September seventh, two thousand twenty-one Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business, please join me for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, Bob, agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the review.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next item, County Ditch ninety-two, set the hearing date. Mr. Hindiker. Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
You can come right up here.
That's cool, huh? Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here today to discuss setting the hearing date for County Ditch ninety-two. A petition to impound reroute and partial abandonment was received by Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources staff on September sixth of two thousand nineteen. The Drainage Authority at that time appointed an engineer, Mr. Charles J. Brandl of ISG, to oversee the project and make a final report. Once all the construction was completed, petition and engineer plans were approved by the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty. The petition project at this time is completed to satisfaction of the appointed engineer and his staff. Completed engineer's review report, along with an as-built, has been filed with the Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources staff. We are requesting at this point, the Drainage Authority set the acceptance hearing for the County Ditch ninety-two petition for September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, at nine P M.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second to set the acceptance hearing for September twenty-first of twenty-one at nine A M. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Have a great day, Ryan.
See you soon.
Thanks for getting up early.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on to public works.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan. Ryan Tildes here to talk to us about some highway projects. And I don't think I see any action items.
Correct, surprisingly.
All informational today. You're just gonna wait and spend all our money next month, right?
Doing my best.
And you're doing a good job of it.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we don't have any action items this month, which I was surprised too. We'll have a few, I know for sure, next month, but a few things just didn't come to fruition quite yet. But we've got a lot going on, and that reflects, I think, in our informational items. The first, we'll begin with some project updates, County Road twenty-seven reconstruction from fourteen to two. Paving is complete. We will be overlaying the final lift in two thousand twenty-two as part of our overlay contract, as is our practice. Mathewitz is working on shouldering and finished grading from the north to the south. We're anticipating with two to three weeks of work estimated before they're opening the road back up. So that project winding down.
Wow, that's great.
Good to get paved, yes.
That'll be nice to get that one open.
I'm sure all the, all the people living on twenty-seven will be really happy with it.
Well, that's somebody that accesses off that road, I can attest to that, so yes, that's kind of our county road that we live on above, so. Absolutely. County Road twenty-seven in Eagle Lake, utilities are underway at phase three, the third of three phases, which is the northern piece from seventeen to fifty-five. The contractor is prepping the subgrade on phase two to begin concrete work. And then after the concrete is cured, they plan on paving phases one and two, which is Thomas Drive up to County Road seventeen. Uh, that'll probably be sometime around the end of September before they're ready to pave that out, so.
Well, what do you think the estimated time for the phase one and two?
Uh, to pave in a month.
End of this month?
Yep. Yep, so things are going well. We'll be pushing, you know, into fall on that project into late fall, but that was kind of, I think, what we knew we were gonna be dealing with. Victory Drive, County Stated Highway eighty-two, um, from Stadium to Hoffman. Light poles are scheduled to be in, uh, to be shipped later this week, which would leave us anticipating opening the road up sometime next week as soon as the light poles are in effectively, everything else is near completed.
What about the signals?
The signals are still, good question, are still delayed until October, so we will be going in as a three-way stop at Bolserzak. Uh, we'll have a stop sign on each side of the road in each direction, so that it's very visible and adequate stop ahead signs. As a temporary traffic control measure until we get the signal lights up and put in, which will be sometime October, it's been pretty non-committal all that time. Every, everything is delayed due to COVID. We'd just love for all these factories to get, get back to work and full productivity.
So, yeah, in a month, we'll be able to drive Victory Drive again.
Well, I would say next week you'll be able to drive Victory Drive again, it's just.
With stop signs.
Stop at Bolserzak.
So next week?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Be nice when the signal lights are on.
Yep, so we'll open it.
The three-way stop is not.
No, not desirable at all.
Next week we'll open it with the three-way stop and then sometime in October when the signals come in, we'll do some work under traffic to put those up.
And you'll have some stop ahead signs? I would imagine. Be nice if we could have some temporary stop signs so people know, because they're gonna get that road open. And the nine people that watch this meeting aren't gonna be able to get that message out, so they'll think, why on earth did they put stop signs here?
Well, we did talk about it, uh, before we opened it, we will put a press release out.
You will, okay, okay.
We'll send it out to the media as well, inform the public that, you know.
That would make sense.
The lights are coming, we know we're doing this.
Yeah.
We have a power outage just here.
I'm not exactly sure.
See, all the lights went out and came back on again.
It seemed like the lights blinked a little bit too, not just, um.
Yeah, it was all the lights went out and came back on.
Knocked out my computer, it looks like.
We don't have a Zoom meeting happening, so I think that's probably a plus of this.
Alright, so, well, that's good, Ryan, I think, yeah, any way we can get that message out there, because especially if it goes into mid-October, end of October, people are gonna think, well, what are we doing here, so.
Well, and with the students coming back.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Be confusing a little bit.
Yeah. Be better if they just use Stadium rather than, um.
It did, yeah, I think that's been one of the benefits, is a lot of people have been using, um, Stadium Road and going to Highway twenty-two or, uh, the three-way stop on Glenwood at the pole is actually working very well too, to help alleviate that, so we've really had very minimal complaints about that road being closed. I'm sure it's, a lot of people are eager to get it reopened, because it is a major artery through the city. But, uh, we've been fortunate in that regard.
I actually think it's been better than most of the roads that are closed. I live by every road that's closed practically. Um, and now I go all the way down to, I go down Bolserzak and then down to, um, Glenwood to the three-way stop. Because if you come down Monks, you're probably gonna get hit. And it's back into the top of the hill.
Yeah.
It's really dangerous. There should be a three-way stop there, I think. That's not our road, so. I mentioned it.
Was there any discussion about not opening up the Victory Drive and leaving the other road closed and not have a three-way stop? Or is it just kind of put the three-way stop in and be done with it?
Yeah, um, with, uh, traffic volumes on Bolserzak.
You need to get it opened up.
We kicked it around, but I think we were just concerned, and we think the three ways with the, the other traffic using some of the other roads and the behaviors having been changed a little bit now. Uh, people, it's gonna level itself out, it's gonna be congested and people are gonna find alternate ways, and we're gonna leave the three-way stop up on Glenwood until the signals are put in as well to help as a.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, and people don't wanna do the stop signs, they'll use the alternative roads.
Correct.
Okay.
I hope, because you've got, you know, you've got a high school over here.
Mm-hmm.
Which, um.
Starts today? Or this week?
Uh, Thursday.
Yes, some, my grandkids start Friday, they're in grade school, and my middle schooler starts a week from Monday, their next Monday.
Alright.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Good discussion.
Something to kind of watch.
Mm-hmm.
I'm concerned about it.
County Road one from nine to ninety, south end at the top of the hill, so just south of the chute, uh, is passable with gravel surfacing and paving will be following in the coming weeks on that piece. So they're gonna get that reopened, especially the intersection with, uh, Casas nine. So that's a good step. Soil nail wall contractor, G S I, is mobilized onsite and they're beginning work on soil nail walls, they're working basically from south to the north. So that's gonna be really interesting, uh, project, we've never done soil nail walls, we've met with them when they were doing the mini OPA, uh, right by the cemetery by the state park, uh, for the railroad. We met with them a couple of years ago and watched them work for the day and kind of took in their process. Uh, they're, they're based out of, I believe, Colorado, they're, they're really, uh, kind of a national, nationwide contractor with expertise in this type of work, so. Yeah, that should be a good thing. Uh, and then with that, Mathewitz is working on the large box culvert and storm sewer work from the north end of the job to the south, so that they can kind of pass each other by, is the objective. So that project's moving along, uh, obviously a lot of work out there, it is a fifteen million dollar contract, so, uh, we're gonna do our best, like I said, do our best to spend all that money.
Um, and just, that's the last leg.
Yes.
Not the last leg.
It's about what the whole project was supposed to cost, if I recall.
Yeah.
It's nice to know the state's paying for that.
It is, um, and, you know, our citizens will have a great road when it's all said and done.
A good road. Well, what's done so far is very nice.
Yeah. The bridge replacement project's Casas seven, the bridge is under contract, the road is currently closed, the old bridge has been removed. And Minnott is pile driving this week, uh, and then Casas forty, County Road one fifty-one, County Road one sixty-nine are all, um, kind of in different states of planned development, ready to be bid on some of them and some on others. Uh, so we'll, we'll provide updates as those get to be ready to bid, though we're just getting plans finalized with the state. Seven in Mapleton, uh, we anticipate ninety-five percent plans this week. After we review the plans, they'll be sent to Minnott for approval. Project will be ready for bidding, uh, whenever we want, likely early winter, probably right after New Year's, so it's usually a pretty good time to get those projects out there. Ten and seventy-two in Vernon Center, we're having the consultant city engineer, which is S E H Consultants, move forward with the design of both of ten and seventy-two. Uh, we are working with an intent-to-cost participate agreement with the city, where we'll detail those costs in the same document we've seen several times with different projects. So that's continuing to develop. Lake Crystal shop is up, it's roofed, it's sided, crews are working on plumbing and electrical. Overhead doors are delayed until October, so, due to COVID, I don't know what else reason there is anymore for anything, but, uh.
Are we having problems getting the doors? I was talking with someone the other day, they said they actually have the doors, but they don't have the hardware to put the doors together. This is what this guy was, he had the, he had the panels, but they couldn't get the hardware.
It's possible.
Yeah.
I know the doors are there, because I saw the roof and the slabs sitting there, yes.
So they're having problems getting the rails and the hardware.
Yeah, we have a bi-weekly meeting and I missed last week.
Yeah, that's, I just, I just heard that from another contractor.
Wow.
I'm able to get the panels at this point, no hardware.
The roof was a big problem, we thought we were gonna have month and months delay on the roof, and they were able to find it finally and get it to us, and, um, Chad and I actually made some calls to try to twist arms, I don't know that it did any good, but we, we tried to lean on people.
Have to get that up and running by winter.
Do we know how County Road twelve and Adams is doing?
It's open to traffic.
It is open.
Yep, it was open last Friday.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah. Drove through it on my way into work this morning.
I drove through it on Friday afternoon.
I didn't know that.
It's a nice road, really is.
Uh, County Stated Highway eleven from twenty to six, Minnesota Highway sixty-eight, uh, we, we're designing that one in-house. We did revise the alignment on the very east end of the connection to Minnesota Highway sixty-eight after meeting with landowners, and there's just a lot of challenges with, uh, the steep slope of the road goes, and then there's basically some topography changes on one side of the road and the other, where it's, it's, uh, a hill on one side and a drop-off on the other. So some challenges with the road alignment and trying to bring everything and, and improve it, so that when we come into State Highway sixty-eight, it comes in on tangent. Right now it's, it's on quite a skew, which really inhibits your sight distance, um, back to the, to the west. So we're gonna bring it in at near ninety-degree angle, which I think we're bringing in at an eighty-degree angle, which is nearly ninety, so. That'll really help, and that's kind of as far as we were willing to take it, which then minimize the impacts into people's yards out there. So we had subsequent meetings with the landowners after we revised our design, and they were more accepting of the revised design after seeing the first cut, so. I think everybody was able to compromise, so we're moving forward with right-of-way Platts, uh, appraisals, and Jack should begin right-of-way negotiations in the coming weeks as we wrap up final detail on the plan and put those final plans set together, so. Six miles of road, it's, it's a long project, so there's a lot of landowners to meet with, but between that and twelve, we're definitely ready for our right-of-way staff to get out there and start buying land and getting ready for the projects. So that'll be kind of a critical path as we move forward. Maintenance activities, just quickly, crews are completing that centerline culvert replacement and drain tile improvements on County Road one thirty-three. They're working on maintenance gravel hauling and placement, we've got about two weeks left of that around the county on all of our gravel roads. Striping has been completed, we're working on patching and shouldering throughout the county. The bottom third of the county has been mowed out, they're gonna resume mowing shoulders and top cuts around the rest of the county. Blading gravel roads, as I know I've spoken with, uh, Commissioners Brunner and Fapon, uh, we, we've obviously had struggles with that at the drought this year. Um, if we blade the road when it's true, too dry, it actually makes conditions worse, as, uh, as you're fully aware. Um, so obviously, that's been a challenge for us, that we, if we do get rain, it seems like it happens on a weekend, and by the time Monday rolls around, our guys go out there to blade and it's too dry, and if we blade it up, then we just create flour on top, and that doesn't ever pack back in properly, so. We, we certainly acknowledge that it's been a challenging year for folks living on gravel roads with the, the ride and the dust. Miscellaneous update, uh, just a couple of items. Title six nondiscrimination plan, I know a couple of commissioners heard about this at the department head meeting, but the Title six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four is a federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin. Minnott is responsible for ensuring equal opportunity for employment in the construction trades on state and federally funded projects, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation, age, religion, marital status, and status with regard to public assistance. The obligation of Title six applies to Minnott as a recipient of federal funds and also the sub-recipient, which would be us, and cities, other counties, et cetera, that receive federal funds from Minnott. So with that, when an agency or local government accepts federal funds of its programs, all of its programs and activities are subject to Title six rules regardless of their funding source, so if we're using local funding, if we ever receive federal dollars, we're obligated. obligated to meet Title VI requirements. Then there's obviously things that are restricted in there, which is exclusion, denial of participation to individuals or groups, or opportunity, denying opportunity to participate.
Mr. Chair, now is that just for the project or is that for our whole?
So that applies to the Public Works Department?
Yeah, in total.
Is how the interpretation?
In total. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
That's my understanding of it.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just project-based or?
Yeah, my understanding is it doesn't apply. If we receive federal funds, it doesn't mean it's just that project that that policy is applicable to that's applicable to basically everything we do.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that being said, I'm currently working on populating. There's a 32-page template document. That's the plan. So I'm working on populating and filling that out as well as developing supporting attachments to go with it. And I do want to thank other county staff because I am going to lean on them for portions of the plan. So Phil Clausen has graciously offered to be of assistance for limited English proficiency and translation services that are a component of the plan. That stuff is some creek to me, unintended. Jesse Anderson for assistance with reviewing the public outreach portion of the plan. And Laura Elbubach in Human Services, I'm sorry, Human Resources for just global policy coordination and coordinating this with some other counties. And then the last item I have is our Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. I know I brought this one up as well. The board is aware that the Emerald Ash Borer has been confirmed being Blue Earth County. I think everybody's aware of its destructive nature. And there's, I believe the number was 1 billion ash trees in the state of Minnesota.
Wow.
1 billion?
That's a lot. That's unbelievable.
Subject to being killed by the ash borer. So with that being said, we began surveying the GPS location of all of the individual ash trees within our county park systems, at least there are major parks. Now, we didn't go into wooded areas alongside the trails or in Bray or Daly where we've got the woods. We're really identifying individual trees that are in kind of the grass or park or campground areas and identify based on the DNR guidelines whether we think they could be treated and saved or if they should be removed.
Just remove them right away.
So we actually were able to kick off a meeting with the MSU Parks and Recreation Department. And we're going to have a capstone project for some of their seniors. And they're going to help us develop a Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. So the city has a really nice, very comprehensive plan. That'll be kind of be similar in nature to the city's plan, but tailored to fit Blue Earth County. And I think, you know, as we get the body of that plan brought forward, we'll have a work session to kind of discuss the impacts on what the parks budget with tree removals and replacement trees and just how many we can save and how many we're going to have to remove and what that's going to look like. And kind of try to help figure out what the timeline looks like for that. You know, is that something that's a three-year project, five-year project, 10-year project? And I'm sure a lot of it will be based on, you know, our capability and time to do the work and obviously much restrictions. So it's interesting and it's very unfortunate, but we have already kind of laid out at least an idea of where we think we want to go with respect to treating trees and intend to like that on next year. That's the board's thoughts of the plan.
Mr. Chair, just to comment on that, it just shows the importance of partnerships. And I know you've got great partnerships with MSU and engineering and parking the parks. It not only helps us, but it helps those students as they move forward. So I think it's an unfortunate thing that it happened, that we've got Emerald Ash Borer. But what a wonderful opportunity for students.
Absolutely. We actually, as we got talking, I started kind of rattling off all the things that are, like the Monarch Butterfly Conservancy Agreement and all these other things. And I think we started building out a list of potential projects and we probably came to about a half a dozen potential projects in the future. So lots of those things that if it goes well, they can help with. And it's, you're right, it's absolutely great. I know as a student, when we did our senior design, that was so exciting to connect with the professionals and be doing real work instead of just your classwork.
And now you're the professional they're connecting with.
Right. So that wraps up my stuff. If there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Ryan?
All right.
Looks like that's it. Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, you did see that the leadership in Mathewitz changed.
I did.
Yeah. I'm in the third generation with Mathewitz now. That's kind of scary. How old am I?
Yes, I did see Chad. Well, he'll be.
He'll do a nice job.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ryan. Have a great day. All right, next we'll hear from our county attorney, Pat McDermond.
Good morning, Pat.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pat.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the report again speaks for itself. I'd just point out a couple of things. Some matters that have been time-consuming, we still have the three enforcement actions that are proceeding through court, albeit not as fast as what most people would like. But then on top of that, I'd just point out data practices, we've been getting quite a few data practices requests and those have been extremely time-consuming and dealing with some dicey areas and some other items within that that are related. But since I talked to you last, we did, there's another homicide case open and the Drug Task Force is investigating two more. So with that said, I'll just see if you have any questions, concerns, or comments.
Vance?
With the data practices issues and with the county sheriff asking for money for cameras, for personal cameras, do you foresee any issues with data practices when it comes to domestic sexual assault, stuff like that?
Yes, I do. It's going to be a drastic increase if people start making data practices requests within that. I'm still waiting to see what the legislature comes up with in some of that to make what, if it's criminal-related or if it's not criminally-related, it's going to be an issue because if somebody comes into your house, you know, in this region, law enforcement responds to medicals. And so if they get into somebody's house and there's camera footage of throughout the house and whatnot, and if that's public information, that seems like some criminals might want some of that information. And I don't think that that should be public. But again, we shall wait and see what the legislature comes up with. But I do see, yeah, in the non-criminal areas, I think it'll be more of an issue if people start making data practices requests and even in the criminal areas, you know, because when we get into, for example, on any sex cases, we have routinely asked the court for a protective order. So when the case is over, any of that information is given back to us and is destroyed. It can't be disclosed and whatnot. So I can see in some cases that we will probably start asking for protective orders in the criminal area as well. But just the general overall data practices will be an issue.
Have you spoke with any other county attorneys that have this going on?
Everybody's in flux, kind of waiting on some of this stuff, waiting for the legislature to catch up in some of these areas and whatnot. But there's some discussion at the County Attorneys Association level with respect to this as well, because more and more people are going to the body cameras.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you said the Drug Task Force is investing in a couple other.
Yes.
Are all of these drug-related, pretty much?
Yes.
That's what I assumed.
And there was a really good report done recently, and I don't know if anybody saw it, it was on KEYC, but they were talked to quite a few different people and whatnot. And it used to be, you know, for quite some time, we were fortunate in this area. We did not have any heroin. And then it was just the opioids and whatnot. But if you get now, the opioids really aren't marketable unless there's fentanyl. And if there's not fentanyl with the heroin, people, there's not much of a market for it. So it's the fentanyl that everybody's going for. So some people are caught with a bag if they don't have enough information.
Wow.
Yeah. And I don't see it getting any better anytime soon.
That's unfortunate.
Very unfortunate. Okay.
Other questions for Pat?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat, for that report. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, we'll move on down to admin.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is County Board Minutes for August 24th.
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for the County Board Minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the County Board Minutes. Bills?
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Move approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Any discussion, questions, or comments that haven't been answered already? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the bills.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number six in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have one action item for the board today, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a property and environmental resources specialist. This is a part-time position within that department. This is the part-time position that the board has seen at work sessions as part of our 2022 new position request. That position had been a temporary part-time position, was recently vacated due to a promotion. And so asking the board's consideration of authorizing that new position a little early, just so that our recruitment can indicate that it's not a temporary position, that it is intended to be a permanent or a regular position going forward.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the adjustment to the property environmental resources.
Just makes sense to me.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chair, it's a backfill, that's correct?
It is a temporary position that has been in place for a number of months. So in effect, yes, it is a backfill.
And we've, yeah, we've talked about this in the past, at different points in time. Any other questions or comments? Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the budget adjustment.
Under information items, then, we have filled a legal assistant in the office of the county attorney. We also have filled a part-time correctional officer in the jail. Then we've also filled a social worker in our supportive housing area, as well as a part-time library clerk down at the library. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on those hires.
It's nice to see no resignation.
It is indeed.
In custody, right?
Especially in custody.
Yeah, in custody, yeah. All right. If there's no questions on them, we'll move down to the next item, Bob.
Item number seven in your packet is the Rural Minnesota Energy Board Joint Powers Agreement. There's a memo in the packet that indicates some of the technical changes to the joint powers agreement. This agreement really focuses on energy issues in rural Minnesota. We've been a part of the Rural Minnesota Energy Board for many years. And so it's just an update to the joint powers agreement.
I will move that. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I would just add, you know, we've met January 25th, March 22nd, May 24th, and then July 26th, looked at this document, approved it as that group. And now just requesting the 18 counties, I'll need to ratify that. So I would urge your support.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the Rural Minnesota Energy Board Joint Powers Agreement.
Just a comment. It just shows the importance of partnerships and not doing everything individually. And so I appreciate your work on this board, Kevin.
18 counties is a big group.
That's a big group.
Well, and sometimes it's really hard with those partnerships.
Yes.
But I think it makes sense when you think about it.
Yes, it is difficult to get things done when the groups get that big, but that is what it is.
And diverse.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, Bob.
Oh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eight in your packet is the financial status report for August 31st. You will see that our total revenues are at a little over $91 million, which is 80% of our annual budget. So we're above our target. Obviously, as been mentioned in the past, the federal ARP monies is a part of that. In August, though, we also did receive the $14 million of turnback funds for County Road 1. So that also has inflated our revenue in this particular financial report. On the expenditure side, our expenses sit at $68.5 million, which is 60% of our annual budget. We'll continue to see some of our road projects show up in the contracts and fees line. So that'll catch up a little bit. But otherwise, the majority of our expenses are kind of tracking with our budget, with the exception of debt service, which is kind of an annual payment. And those will be coming up here later this fall. So overall, you know, we're sitting in probably a more positive position than we typically are at this point because of those one-time infusions of either federal or state funds. On the enterprise fund, the Ponderosa, you'll see total revenues are a little over $3 million against expenses of just under $1.3 million. So building reserves there a little bit for future cell improvements or equipment purchases. The second page then has our cash balances, our total available funds. At the top shows the reserves at just under $79 million, so a little higher than our six-month operating needs. Again, the biggest item is that public works reserve, which has that $14 million of turnback funds added in this month. Our total county funds then sit at $141 million roughly. Again, that's up a little bit because of those other items. But overall, you know, sitting in a positive position at this point with some of those funds yet to be dispersed as those projects play out. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on the financial status report.
Any questions or comments on the?
It looks positive. I think we all know that we praise our staff for doing such a good job and taking care of the county. I think we all of a sudden, we can look at how we're sitting.
Yes, very positive. So just refresh my memory, Bob, on the turnback funds, they give them to us before we spend the money? Or is it differ by project? Because some projects seems like we have to spend it, then we get it.
Yeah, it is really different. You know, I was a little surprised in this particular one to see the $14 million for this particular phase of that project because I thought it was more on a reimbursement basis. But it must be on an advance and then reimbursement basis. Sometimes they give us all the money and say, we're done, you know, and we take on some of the risk. That wasn't the way this particular agreement was developed.
Thank goodness.
Yes, yes.
Because the initial numbers on this project were like 20 million and we've, this last portion of it's almost 20 million.
Right.
We're, we were, it was a good way not to do that deal. So, all right, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions on the financial report?
Nope.
Okay.
Got to zoom through that.
Yeah. Any other items before we move on to the Commissioners' reports, Bob?
That's all I had for you today.
All right. Well, thank you for that. And Colleen, I think I'll start with you today.
Okay. On the 27th, we had the reconvening of the Mapping Racial Covenants. Tim Meakin, who was a West High School teacher, and Jill Cooley from MSU in the History Department, they're going to do, part of this is a class project. As you all know, we're the keeper of the deeds. So Mike will be helping with that, you know, just how do you read a deed? And you've got abstracts and you've got, what's the other one? Tornance.
Tornance.
And he figures, Mike figures, very few tornance will have the racial discrimination, but probably a lot of, some S, abstracts. So we're just starting to bring that back again. MSU's involved in many ways. The dean is also, and they're also going to be looking for community members to do this, but that'll be a little later on in the process. Part of it is training. The gentleman, Kevin was his name, who we were working with before COVID, passed away.
Oh.
Yeah, young man. I don't know if this COVID really. I don't know if it was COVID-related or not, so we're kind of recoming together and figuring it out. On the 31st, Kip and I were at the Justice Center with the Martin County group. They were looking at building a jail or a justice center, they're not sure what, and are going around and looking. It was a great tour.
It was, yeah.
It really was. And always nice to see the people from Martin County and chat a bit about the history also of how the Justice Center came to be. Pat was there and the, so it was good. On the first of September, we had department heads and then Vance and I were on the AMC Conversation that's held monthly. A lot of discussion on armor and the challenges that's going to, because the radios are now at their lifespan. We've, this organization was smart enough to be planning for that, not all organizations were. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Colleen. Vance?
Well, I have kind of a short one this time.
So did I.
I zoom right to September 1st with the AMC coffee and then we had our department head meeting. The next day, I had my regional towards zero death steering committee meeting when they start showing the deaths that have happened in the region over the course of the last month. It's just scary. I mean, it's, speed and accidents have gone way up over the last year and a half. And in trying to understand and why this has happened, it's more of a, you know, nobody really knows except that it's just the unrest and people feeling that they can do what they want. The next morning, I had an interview on TZD. They wanted to interview a commissioner to see if local government officials should be involved with TZD. And of course, I've been involved with TZD for 20 years since its start when I was in law enforcement. And so we had a nice interview. I don't know where that's going to go and where it's going to play, but.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if not local government, then who?
Well, it's, it was more.
Just said I'd ask a question.
Yep, and that's a whole thing is they wanted to see, and of course, for my sake, it wasn't just commissioners, it was city council, township officers. These people have to get involved because people see their state, their legislators and their senators, and they don't think it's their next-door neighbors. It's somebody that's, you know, but when they see their next-door neighbor being a county commissioner or city council or township officer, showing the importance of driving safe or having safe roads and the importance of having engineers, police officers, emergency medical personnel, and of course, government behind the same thing and trying to save lives, it makes a huge difference. And that's kind of where the conversation went, and that's kind of the end of my report.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification, because, yeah, Colleen, you're right, that just makes sense to have us local people on that committee.
It does.
All right, thank you, Vance. Kevin?
Since our August 24th board meeting, department head has already been mentioned, also participated with other commissioners at the short-term rental open house, did a nice job with that. I've attended our Lassure, One Watershed, One Plan, we've had our sixth meeting on the 27th of August, and then discussion with staff ISG on ditch 56 and preparation for today's meeting, as well as discussions with constituents on not only ditch 56, but the short-term rental and some Watt and One River issues. That completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mark?
Well, Mr. Chair, and being, yes, there's Vance talking about people being relating or with their local officials a little bit better than their state reps or senators and so forth, I did go to after our board meeting on 24th, the 19 night, I went to about six.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that one.
Yeah, see, yeah, I was wondering why I didn't.
We all did.
Figured you did.
I think I had a dozen, 12 of them I went to that night.
Figured I wasn't the right track this time, yeah.
But I appreciate you bringing it up because.
Yeah, I went to like about six of them and some had actually this year closed off streets, the city allowed a few, at least partial blockages.
We had the hockey team.
What's that?
We had the hockey team from MSU.
Oh, wow.
The women's and the men's.
My understanding is the city ran out of signs. There were so many, there were so many of them this year that the city ran out of signs.
And they had a mix-up apparently, yeah. When the fire trucks, yeah, fire trucks got early to ones where they, because people didn't have the same schedules when they started, yeah. But I was amazed there were a few that were, had done it two years ago that were still, you know, had still hosted it, so. Then on, after that, we did have the construction 12, County State Highway 12, the reconstruction open house up at by the airport. Yeah, that was before that, actually, before the, same day as the 19 night, there was a couple of people there. Carl Fredericks is there. Then there was, had on September 1st, department heads and then of the, not, September 1st was department, was it after our department head, we had the short-term rental open house that Kevin brought up. And then on September 2nd, had our maple, our first in-person maple meeting since, whatever, before the COVID. So that was kind of, that was kind of nice. Then we, then, yeah, Labor Day. I didn't labor much on Labor Day. You didn't either.
All right, thank you, Mark. Couple of items that were already mentioned, I attended, but I had several of my statewide emergency communication board meetings and our 403B rewrite, we're just getting that wrapped up. Should be trying to get that to the legislator in the next couple of months here. We had a ledge meeting, basically talking about the 403B rewrite and some other items to discuss, but I do want to back up a little bit about the short-term rental discussion. Apparently, we were all at the first round, which I don't think anybody showed up from constituencies, but they did have one before the planning and zoning meeting, again, last Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:00, and they had several people show up and.
More than double, yeah.
Yeah, put their input in, but they got some good feedback, they got some good feedback from some, some of the residents in our community. And then at 6:15 till 6:45, which of course went a little late, we discussed it about it at the planning and zoning level. So had a lot of good discussion about it, there's some stuff floating around out there. And again, I think as it gets closer and closer to the day, we'll get more and more concerns and more and more items to deal with, but.
I bet.
We'll just, we'll work through those. And the Justice Center tour, as Colleen mentioned, that was, it was nice to get back in there and see it. Unfortunately, didn't stick around long enough to go up to see Pat's office again. I think I got, we left after the jail portion part of it. But, yeah, you forget, I mean, it's been years since I've been in there. So Jim did a nice job showing us around, Captain Barta did a great job leading the program and, and I think this is what I'd like to mention as I was talking with some of the commissioners, Elliot Bellegarde and, well, they have a coordinator, Scott. The challenge they have is the funding. They don't have the money to pay for this. So we're just very fortunate here in Blue Earth County with the resources we have and the ability to be able to do these projects and not have to worry about trying to pay for them, you know, as these people do. And when we built the Justice Center the first time around, we had a big informational program or that we went to all the small communities, Lake Crystal, we went everywhere, and we didn't get much of a turnout because we weren't raising the taxes 20% to pay for the Justice Center.
It's because we have.
Because the previous boards saved for it and were able to fund it and pay for it. But, yeah, as I visited with some of the commissioners and Scott, they have some huge challenges. You know, it's a service they have to provide. You can't not have a jail and courts and they can't, they're having a hard time paying for it, so.
They are, and they talked to me about that too, that it's a real challenge. I asked if they had a judge, because I wasn't sure if they had a judge.
Yeah.
And they got one and a half.
Okay.
They said, and they've been using Faribault County to a certain extent, but the sheriff and I talked about this at department heads, just their, Faribault County doesn't want to take the really difficult prisoners.
Sure.
So it's, it's a challenge in many ways.
So with that, that brings me to the end of my report. So if there's no other items, we would be adjourning today.
You'll recess because you'll be going for lunch as well.
I move we recess.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second to recess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
I don't suppose there's any way we can move that up to 11 o'clock?
Oh, no, we got, we got 10, we got ditched up now.